Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrating. Mr. Rick Morris, will you please lead us in our prayer? And our place to see you, sir.
Lord, we gather here tonight with heavy hearts. With Jason lost his grandmother. She has no more earthly struggles. Lord, we live Jason and his whole family up to you and ask that you reach out and touch him and bring him comfort as only you can. As we go about the business of boundary and what's on our agenda, just give us the wisdom and the knowledge and the understanding that we make these decisions for the benefit of the whole city and every person who lives here. Lord, just lead us and guide us in these endeavors. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the February 18th, 2019 meeting, please. Everybody had time to review.
Jeff Smith at the last meeting.
Yes.
Okay, his name was left off at the present.
Okay.
And then on page two, under the City Ministers there, it's the first bullet point says, "Report on Fifth Waterline." I would just add street to that. We know, but maybe a few years down route.
Anything else? Everyone all right?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second? All in favor, say aye. Jump so fast that I'm mucking over.
Second, over here.
All right. All right, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. Per the open meetings at the city council, may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. All presentations are subject to a five-minute timeout. Is anyone present tonight? Not on the agenda. Everybody jumped in once as usual. Thank y'all. City council may consider, discuss, or take action to Elaine Passkey's request from the park board to add Chad Hardy to the board.
He has expressed an interest in serving on the board. We're glad to have him. And if y'all approve him tonight, we will vote on him on the 21st at our next meeting.
Okay. Any comments? No?
I make a motion that... We approving Elaine Passkey's request for the park board to add Chad Hardy to the board.
There you go. That's good. Second, also. All in favor, say aye. There you go. That was a poor word. City council may discuss, may consider, discuss, or take action to approve a contract with Munisi Pay?
Munisipay.
Credit, debit, and card services. Didn't we already do one in the last meeting?
We did it. That was GovPay. This is a different company, Munisipay. There's several credit and debit card services out there. This is just an additional one. This one actually works a lot with the computer system that we're looking at, which is fun to view. We've taken bids and everything. We just wanted to make sure we were able to use them before we researched a little further into the software.
So this is for the collections. This is more for water. But it'll be a lot of payments?
Municipal and...
Municipal and water.
And the collections.
Okay.
This works for both.
Okay.
As does GovPay. I mean, we're not... It's a percentage contract. If you use them, you pay X amount of dollars.
Right.
If you use another one, you pay X amount of dollars.
Okay, so you don't have to easy.
No, they're not, they're not sort of working for criteria.
This one is more compatible with the accounting system we're looking at.
Yes, that is correct. This is the only one they use, so we wanna... We're working these in tandem. We're looking at this... We've taken two different bids on the computer system. We don't have our bid tab in yet, so we can show y'all, you know, comparative views of what the different softwares do and how much they cost. So we're gonna do that on the next council meeting, but we wanted to go ahead and put this in, so it would be approved.
Motion to approve the contract with Munisi Pay for credit debit card services.
I make a motion. Hmm? I make a motion to approve.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action on the fourth quarter hotel motel tax report. You should have those two in at your desk, I should say.
Yes, I did a, just kind of a, an easy to look at page, and then the profit and loss detail is on the back part of this. We received a third quarter hotel motel tax check in the fourth quarter, and it was sixty-nine, sixty-eight oh seven. And we ended the year with a little over thirty-two thousand dollars. We have since been receiving our fourth quarter hotel motel tax check that is now on here. And we're now at a little over thirty-eight thousand dollars of income out of accounts. There was no unusual expenditures in the fourth quarter. As you can tell, it was advertising Ruffin's, the internet at the community center, and three of my paychecks, and then some promotional supplies for one of our events, which was the banners, and that was Third Bounder Frank.
You said you received?
Yes, we got. It was, it was pretty close to the sixty-nine, sixty-eight. It was, yes.
Kind of like twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes. It was just seven, seven thousand. I've got that number at the top of my head. Any questions?
Y'all have any questions?
I'm good.
All right, motion to accept. The hotel motel tax report is presented, please.
Sure move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Back to Mr. Stone.
Stand there.
You guys standing there?
I think I'm on it.
You're on the edge. I figured you were.
I've got most of the agenda.
You're good. All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action for a request from the Chamber of Commerce for permission to hold the Texas State Festival of Ethnic Cultures Parade. Go ahead.
That will be on April 27th at 10:00 a.m. And lineup will be, you start at 10th and Railroad and go to Broadway, and then back up to Railroad and down to Texas.
10th and Railroad?
Yes, start over here. Go to Hutchins, down to Broadway. Okay, because of the low storm market we'll have.
Pretty rough there.
Yes.
That'll be good to do too.
Is it?
Now we have a much better way for antique and vintage vehicles to park. They will be happier this year. Lineup over there.
Where are you gonna put them?
Is that by Delving?
Well, as far as the lineup, last year the road wasn't as...
Oh.
We did have some complaints, and this, but it was torn up pretty good. So this year, it'd be much better for them. It's nice up there.
Everybody good? All right, motion to accept the Chamber of Commerce's request to hold the Texas State Festival Ethnic Cultures Parade on April 27th.
Make a motion to approve. He's in hurry. I'll say it.
All right, maybe we say aye.
No, he's not in there.
Talking on each other's side. All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action on a request from the Chamber of Commerce for the closure of Seventh Street, Strong Avenue, and use of the plaza for the Texas State Festival of Ethnic Cultures.
All right, on Strong, this is where we typically drive three-on-three. The car show we will have again this year, they requested to set up over there for overflow, and we do not have a specific plan yet. We would also like to close off Seventh Street, just the 100th block of Seventh Street this side in case we need to move the three-on-three over here or move one of our other events over here.
Strong's over behind the...
Yes, behind the courthouse. We typically close off from Seven down to Sixth.
I drove down that minute of the day, and I wouldn't want to play that slow.
It's kind of rough. It is kind of rough.
I didn't try to say anything. I tried to make fun of that.
It was worse.
Part of these things, of course.
Yeah, we fixed it a little bit.
Okay, we may have to have wear knee pads and elbow pads and a helmet, but we'll play three-on-three. And then the Pioneer Plaza, we set up there last year to sell beer and wine. We are requesting to do that again this year. And also, we'd like to have a small concert in that area that evening after festivals.
Everybody being quiet, so I was waiting for everybody to jump.
You say the one-third ball, which is...
Yes, sir. This 100th block of Seventh Street.
Right in front of your house.
Right in front.
You just gonna do the basketball?
I'm not sure if we're gonna move the basketball there for the fans. Not, not... I just promised him here, you'll not put the fan there.
I did suggest that. They didn't really.
You're gonna be in the group.
There you go.
It was discussed to put the three-on-three over there, but after thinking about it, I'm not real sure that's the best place to put it because of missing, is the windows, missing baskets and stuff like that. But that is something that we are trying to figure out logistically.
I think a lot of it is that their plans aren't set in stone yet, but they want the option to be able to close that.
Yes, and we want that.
That's gonna head back to...
And I promise you that I am taking all of hope and sense into consideration as far as where, where's the safest places to put those things.
Who's gonna provide the music?
I'm not sure. Jeff Smith is handling that at least. Yes.
I can't remember the two. We've got two different artists, but I'm providing the sound.
And Harry Wayne and one of the oil companies are paying for the bands.
Brandon Davis is...
I saw the name of the band, but I don't remember the words.
They're up and coming Texas band, I guess.
Still got the...
wildly out of my genre song.
Lots of good songs with the beer and wine.
Yes, sir. Yes, we'll have license and insurance.
Do you go under somebody else's license?
No, sir. We actually, we actually have, we get a temporary TABC license for TABC.
But before, you go under another license?
In the past? No, we, last year, we just had a tour of our local restaurant, and so they did it.
That's for us.
Yes, sir. This year, we will be doing it, and it'll be under, we will have a temporary event license for TABC as well as a temporary event insurance to cover that.
Thank you for not having a band on show. I hope you don't get tangled up in those pallets over there.
Heard you never.
Something about you.
All right, motion to accept the request from Chamber of Commerce for the closure of Seventh Street, Strong Avenue, and the use of the plaza for the Texas State Festival of Ethnic Cultures.
Target.
All in favor? All in favor?
Thank you.
Why are you...? I don't know what's going on.
Oh, we're gonna freak me over here.
All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action on developing a food truck ordinance. I think we spoke about this. It's something that's starting to happen in the cities around us, and Mr. Chester had brought something for us to review.
Well, I got a call from the councilman this week there and asking about this. And so we looked at our ordinance, as Tom and I did, we didn't see anything really other than we have to acquire food than come in. But beyond that, we don't have anything. Our ordinance is talking about licenses and restrictions of where they can be, how long they can be there. And so what I did is I pulled up a couple of, this is Belton's, the mobile food trucks, kind of talking about all the issues that they were looking at. This is not their ordinance. They kind of give you an idea of all of the issues that they looked at, that we probably ought to look at as well. And then I gave you this simple ordinance that Sadeen did, that requires a license and zoning and location restrictions and duration to stay, and other requirements that they require. And so I thought they'd give y'all some ideas, and I could pick it up or something, we'd talk to Tom about it, what we want. I think the key thing is, is that, you know, you're, where they can be at. Obviously, private property, can they be there for months? Seventy-two hours? What you want to set those kind of criteria. Right now, we don't have any regulations at all going.
Are both of these, whether it be a month, or day, or week, whatever, are both of these examples, I read one of it was like an annual permit? So that maybe they could set up every day for a year?
Yeah, they would set it up.
On that same hundred dollars or whatever.
Yes.
I don't agree with it.
Yeah, they could. We could set up this spot permit. If it's gonna be temporary permits, we can do that one.
Do whatever.
Well, we, we could even place it in the ordinance where they have a three-day, a five-day, you know, something like that. And limit it, their time, they may have to leave and then come back the next day, but at least they're, they're having to be mobile, which is what they're supposed to be. So...
What brought this up?
I think the local... First story, they're concerned that they're not contributing to our city, but they're taking funds from us to pay taxes or... Well, well, they could be from out of the area, is my question. They could be from Eden, for example, come over here. And then all that money goes back to you.
It's not supposed to. They're supposed to pay where they collect.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the things. Right, right, but he goes to concern by the system that runs it.
We don't have any way of knowing who pays sales tax without, there was a certain ordinance or a package that told him about it, the exact tax, if you can actually track and see who pays sales tax in the city. Otherwise, if you don't know, you just get reports showing a lump sum and they've run out of business, so you have no way to track it. So that's something we have to look at, something.
So really, in overall, is this something we're wanting to try to look at as far as doing for events for three days, five days? Or just, this was my thought on it when I saw this, was Abilene is starting to allow me, and Austin has always been doing it, San Angelo's talking about it, or actually starting to implement. So I didn't know if we were in the mix of what was starting to be implemented as far as the new fad.
Trying to get on board and start getting food trucks? Have something to do with...
Yeah, they're becoming popular and want to be...
I'm good with it. I was just saying, that's what I was thinking it was.
I'm sure we're covering our bases. I think we're concerned.
Well, this way, we're ahead of the curve.
Right.
I like food trucks.
I love food trucks too. This isn't to discourage.
No. How long does it take? I like to eat.
Right. Last one thing I thought about, some cities set up food court areas.
Correct.
I think that's a good idea.
And even like I've seen it where they would take the old children building, put some picnic tables in it.
Right.
Food trucks all parked in the parking lot. You said, "Tell them where they're eating."
Like the burnout.
Pick 'em back.
Burnout or the lion steel?
Yeah.
A lot of people go in there and...
If you could get your food trucks to an area where they could just walk to the cemetery. But I don't know, still, many cities.
But obviously, if you're a restaurant, stick-built restaurant, you don't want some parking lot right next to the restaurant.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, with no overhead.
Exactly.
Right.
So the cabins are...
The whole stuff I do.
Yeah, but all the employees are in the location.
I'm willing to do that. That makes sense.
So... I want to work on that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, is this, are you gonna work on it? Bring us something to look at next?
Give us an opportunity to review all of it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll set out some things, some options, and we can then...
Input our thoughts.
We do want to set up an area. That's one way to do it.
The pick 'em back is very great, but you're parking lot. Want to go sit inside? Of course you got to buy it.
It's not gonna be cheap property.
That's why I got that big one.
Yeah. Percy, I think Jason said he wanted to buy it. Yeah, yeah. I want that to be used myself.
All right, so we want a motion to move forward on implementing a food truck ordinance?
Yes, I make that one.
Second?
We're gonna come up with...
All in favor?
Yeah.
He's gonna...
Because this, I'd rather not see them park out front of business.
No, 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 no.
I mean, that's not addressed here. This is a public street that's designated, no parking.
Right. But I think we're gonna permit the artists, and we have to say so on where they should be or where else like that.
In like a zone.
Right, presentable.
Is this gonna cover all the guys driving around selling burritos and stuff?
They don't come down off street.
Well, I see them every day.
I don't think it's gonna cover them per se, because this is exclusively food trucks, not a guy selling burritos out of a...
By SIM card.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, that's more of a healthy thing. I mean, as long as they have their health code permit. This is an actual food truck. So, I mean, we could address that if y'all decide to.
Well, I mean, I think...
Selling burritos.
Most of them don't comply with the health codes, because that's my, my...
Right.
Sounds some good food.
Yeah, they used to, Brown would always come by and sell burritos to the all. Somebody said, "Do they have a permit?" "No, we've been buying from..."
There's a couple of people go out to Muller's every morning, sell breakfast burritos. And it's an actual burrito shop here in town, so... He goes out there trying to, you know, make it easy for them to produce, so... They're not coming to him, so he goes in.
Right, right.
But we already have a tax number.
Fully mobile.
Right, it's more of a delivery service.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
Like the food trucks, food trucks are basically a business on wheels, and some of them are an extension of their stick build.
Right.
And some are...
And the others would be covered mostly under a home business. So, I mean, it won't, it won't really cover those individuals or those businesses, but it will do outright food truck. Honestly, like Smokey Joe's, because he does have a trailer, you know, that would be considered a food truck. It's fully equipped. That went out of Eden, and that's the only two I know of operating in town.
Who's out of Eden?
I thought those were the first examples.
Some market, please.
I don't know what...
Second hand markets, but in my business.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We'll have to address later, the festivals having the food trucks and the fundraisers and the trucks.
Yeah, because those are...
Events.
Yeah, part of an event, and they actually pay for the event, to be part of the event, like a booth space or, you know, a trailer space or whatever you want to call it. But, so, I mean, this is someone just kind of freelance setting up and somebody's parking lot, you know.
And we do, we do bring them in for an event, and it's not, like at the courthouse, when you ask permission, the board put them up in front of the business.
All right. Good information. Right.
So we've got a motion and second.
Yeah, right now.
But we didn't vote.
We didn't vote. So all in favor, say aye, to move forward on doing an ordinance. Right, all in favor, say aye. And Mr. Chester is willing to move forward on getting this ordinance in place. We can work on that. Again. Do what? Wait a minute. All right. I consider approval of billing permits, but I did not see one. Do we have any comment?
We do not have any billing permits this week. Earlier, for the last two weeks.
It's okay.
All right, here's the police activity monthly report. Chief, stand on the rest, please.
All right. For February, we've had a total of ten arrests, thirty-one sports taken, eight accidents, two hundred incident by fault service, total citations of ninety-nine, two of them being code violations, and gathering almost thirteen, over thirteen thousand dollars in fines, sixteen, over sixteen hundred miles driven. With a couple of bumps on the road, we were able to get the JAG grant entered and before the deadline, it came up to within the hour. But I think we got it in there. So we won't know anything about the JAG grant until after April. I think mid-April, end of April, the committee is set to meet, and then we'll be notified then whether or not we're granted any funds. What else? Other than that, I'm not gonna be here for most part of March. I don't discuss that personally. If you have any issue with that. Other than that, I think that's pretty much it. Oh. Help Chad Hardy, T and R programs, we're getting, going through, getting it back up and going. Chad Hardy has gone here to help with that. And so far, we've gotten several cats in, and we're just slowly moving and getting that going.
That's with the animal shelter.
Yeah, okay, animal shelter.
Second.
The T and R?
T and R.
The sense word.
Trap and release. Trap and release.
Trap and release, okay. And it's primarily for the cats in town, the feral cats. We'll set up traps. They go get them, you know, periodically. If they have a cat that has not already been spayed or neutered, they take it to the veterinarian, and then they provide that service force. They give them a fairly large discount. I think to neuter a male cat is twenty-five dollars, and to spay a female cat is how much?
A little bit more, I think, thirty-five, forty? Sixty-five?
Yeah, I think that's about double, yeah, sixty-five.
Yeah, double. Double two.
Yeah, so, anyway. This program has been up and running for a little while now. We just been able to catch up and tell the council about it. And so, and it seems to be pretty positive. A lot of people are happy that we're addressing the problem and that we're not putting them down, so, but it's good.
Anything else?
Did you have anything else standing up?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. All right, good, City Ministers, bye. We can report, please.
All right. Our water plant? We, we got a proposal from a contractor for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to repair the valve. We, we think we can do it a lot cheaper. In fact, we know we can. We've already ordered the parts for it and the equipment. Pumps were delivered today. We had a box delivered last week. We've ordered parts in from Houston and Oklahoma in order to replace a pipe that was broken. We should be able to start on that tomorrow, pump out the water, so we can see actually what's going on down there. We've had about ten, twelve feet of water sitting on top of it that we couldn't get to anything. So we'll empty the hole, put the trench boxes down there so we can work safely. And then Carlos and his crew will get down there and start replacing the pipe, because it's already here. Our fitting should be here Wednesday, I believe. And also, we're gonna look at that valve. What happened? Um, and also, we're gonna look at that, that valve, what happened, when it broke, it, it broke in a closed position. If it had broken open, then we wouldn't have to reroute water to run it, so, anyway, we're, uh, uh, we'll start in tomorrow. I believe it's gonna take us roughly two weeks to get this repaired, and we're thinking maybe the total cost of twenty-five thousand. So, that's what we're looking at, so, that'd save us a hundred thousand dollars right off the bat. Uh, we'll, I'll keep the council and everybody up to speed on where we're at, when things start happening. Uh, next thing, we had been working on the water line on Fifth Street, uh, it is complete, all eleven houses have brand-new water taps and are receiving, uh, good water, uh. Or un-untainted water from metal pipe, so, uh, everybody seems to be very pleased with what we've done over there. Uh, we're breaking that down, uh, this was a good measure of where we're going. Um, we've got it down to where we know how many, how much money, or how much it's gonna cost us per foot to replace the main water line, and how much it's gonna cost us per tap to do each house. So that way, we can look at any given street and get a gauge on how much it's gonna cost for two blocks or one block, you know? If we do one block, two, or three, or four, five, we get a good gauge on how much it's gonna cost, and we know how many houses are on that block, how much this is gonna cost. So, it's gonna give us a, it puts us pretty far ahead on getting ready for our budget for next year. So, uh, because we've, we've got approximately sixty percent of the town in poly pipe, and forty percent is old pipe. Some of it's gonna be PVC, some of it's gonna be metal, copper, and there's a variety of, of material they used out there through, through the ages, so. Uh, this'll give us a good read on where we're headed. Uh, do you remember what those figures were, Carlos?
Well, I would say for that, for those two blocks, it was like five hundred and four dollars a foot.
There you go.
To tell them how much we broke it down.
Right.
But, I finished the number today, so I'll give that to you. And they'll have the service lines, what it costs just for the service lines and just the main, and then the equipment, man-hours and all that.
Right, excellent. See, we're wanting to do the same thing we've done on the streets, we know it's costing us seven thousand, six hundred dollars to pay one block. Uh, now, we're gonna know how much it's gonna cost to put in a, a new water line per block, and how much it's gonna cost us for how many houses are on that block. So it'll be, it'd be a nice, quick way, once we get all those numbers, we can report them at the next meeting, and tell you what we're looking at. That way, we can look at any map and say, okay, so it costs us twenty thousand dollars to replace this line, disrupt it, so. Uh, our Boy Scout project, and the Boy Scout hut, or actually, it was the Girl Scout hut, now it's gonna be a combined Boy Scout, Girl Scout hut. Uh, we were going to, hoping to get that finished, uh, the second of March. Uh, we had some issues with, uh, with the bathroom, uh, it's not ADA, uh, it wouldn't be ADA approved, and, uh. The, the walls were pretty rotted out, so we ended up just taking the whole bathroom down, we're gonna have to go back in with a new walls and, and all new attachments. So it pushes us back, we're gonna push that to third of March, because right now, we're really concentrating on our water plant. Uh, so, that'll, that'll give us enough cushion to, to try and complete the Boy Scout hut.
Did y'all push, are y'all gonna push the bathroom further out this way, or y'all taking part of the kitchen?
Well, at the moment, the, we're just gonna go back with a single room.
Is the kitchen fine?
Oh, everything's, it's just one big room.
Oh.
Yeah, uh, now, the electrical is complete, uh, the plumbing won't be an issue, it was just deciding where the bathroom should go. Uh, we looked at going out the side of it, like where the front door is, uh, just coming out with, uh, two, two different bathrooms, have a boys and a girls.
Oh, yeah.
And have a proper bathroom there, uh, but trying to expedite this so the boys, girl, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts can actually use it this spring and summer. Uh, we're just gonna go back with a simple bathroom right now, that will meet ADA requirements. Uh, and we'd also looked at pushing the back end of it towards the armory, uh, maybe half the building, make it a, you know, a shared bathroom, well, boy and girl bathroom. Uh, but again, trying to expedite some of the time, we can just go back, and we kind of generally estimated a new bathroom, if we came out there, that'd pay about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. Which we don't really wanna spend on the Scout Hut at the moment, we have other places for it to go, so, we are gonna go back just for the simple bathroom. And, now, I wanna make note that, uh, the Rover Club, uh, has spent a great deal of money, uh, to get this project going, I think they gave us around five thousand dollars. Uh, all we're doing right now is labor, so, uh, you know, and with these projects, what we're trying to do is find partners that can help us either funding, or labor, donating materials, anything of that nature. That can, you know, that way, we can go ahead and tackle these little projects and get them out of the way, and complete them, so they can be used, and we're not having to carry the full load of it as the city. So, uh, you know, another good example's Pioneer Plaza. You know, total project will be ten thousand, and the only reason we really jumped off into that was because the Dayforce family said they were donating half of it, so, you know, it. It's almost likely even money on the table if we don't go ahead and start with that project, so. Uh, so that was the Boy Scout, uh, Pioneer Plaza, we were supposed to start, uh, two weeks ago, it keeps getting pushed back a little bit here and there, they were supposed to start today, with the weather's implement, you know, not, not very good, so. We're hoping for our eleventh March start date, and we're pushing for a third of March completion date. It might lead over into, uh, April a little bit, but we're real, uh, we're extremely aware of the start date of the ethnic festival, because we don't wanna have a bunch of rocks laying around and have to complete the project when you're using that as part of your revenue. So, we're really hoping this, this'll get started going and completed before the, the, uh, ethnic festival. And if it turns out that he won't be able to start and complete before then, we'll push the whole project back till after the ethnic, that way it doesn't interfere with what we're doing there. Uh, we have a billboard project, uh, our idea, working with the Chamber, is, uh, having billboards coming into town and going out of town, on each major highway. So we got five major highways coming into town, if you had a billboard, uh, three billboards going towards San Angelo, say, uh, where we can sell space on these billboards to, say, Loiki, or Spinares, or someone in San Angelo. We're hoping to use this revenue to fund a billboard coming into town, into Valuer, uh, for our local merchant, uh, merchants here in town. Uh, Walmart, uh, IGA, uh, some of your downtown merchants. Uh, and it will, so the, what we get from outside of town would offset what our local merchants are having to pay, that's kind of our brand design there. Uh, we went to, uh, the Chamber, and they approved hot funds, the hotel motel tax funds to pay for our initial design. Uh, we have a, the design's kind of tentative, but, uh, they approved five thousand dollars for our first one, and we're trying to, uh, get our design ready, and then be able to work on that. Uh, negotiate with the landowner for a place to put it, we've already talked to, uh, Tech dot, because they have the right way, we have to get permits for these signs, these billboards. And, uh, so, as we get our design together, and get our permits from Tech dot, we'll update you guys on where we're gonna put them, you know, things of that nature. So, but it is in process, uh, it will be something we work on, probably early, like, you know, beginning of the summer season, so we can, uh, work outside, so it'll be cool. Uh, we have a Tech dot bridge relocation. Last week, Tech dot came here, they have, they have five bridges that they're going to, uh, uh, either, well, do away with and put in bridges on different parts of the county. Uh, there were two that caught our eye, and they, uh, had basically given these bridges to us, we gotta, we gotta express interest and come up with a plan of where we're gonna put them. Uh, but they basically have given us, uh, uh, there's a bridge at Mustang Creek, and it's a, it's a metal bridge, uh, these are pony trusses, is what they call it, it's a pony truss bridge. And there's another bridge at Oak Creek, I don't know if you can see it very well, but it's another metal truss bridge, and both of them were built around, well, late twenties, early thirties, and, um. The, or the contract that Tech dot has with their contractors, that they take these bridges and set them off, and since we've offered to take them, uh. They'll simply just put it on the truck and haul it to our lay-down yard, uh, which we're gonna put in South, uh, South Valuer, in the flats back there, uh, right off the river. But we need to be able to store them for, in a definite period of time, till we can, uh, prepare a place for them to go. So it's not gonna cost anything for them to take the bridge and lay it down in our lay-down yard. Uh, there will be some minor repair that needs to be made, mostly, they just need to be painted, which is not very hard to finish it all. And, uh, we won't strip them unless we have to, because it's better to leave the paint there that's on there, but we can, uh, paint it with a, an all-weather paint, an industrial paint. And, uh, and just leave it sit till we get our new location, uh, prepped and ready to go. Our first thought is to put one at the park over Elm Creek, and our second is, uh, in some of our areas where we may have washouts, and our plan is to, to make a bike trail and a walking trail from Gore Park down to, uh, uh, Carver Building. So, this'll be, we can actually take different pieces of this one, because it comes off in three pieces, and, uh, use the middle for one section, and then the two ends for a different section if we need to. Additionally, during our conversation with the, uh, county commissioners, they, uh, they had given us the bridge of the twelve mile, the one that burned, and, uh, we were out there looking into it, and we think we can take it down. Not in, well, we can take it down in sections or piece mentally the one, but, uh, it won't be a contractor-driven job, where we have to go pay a contractor to take it down. Uh, we'll be able to do pieces of it at our own leisure, because they're not gonna do anything with it. So, uh, and that's, so we, we basically ended up with three truss bridges that we'll be able to put in different parts of the city to help add to the charm as we go, you know, our next five years, you know, building plans, so. So that's these two bridges. Uh, this is charter update, and I was gonna rely on Christine Pat to see where we're at, I don't, you were supposed to send out something, I don't know when the date was.
Well, we're gonna meet on, on March the twenty-seventh, the next charter review committee, so I need to get them to revise, uh, suggested changes before that, so. I'm gonna try, the spring break is next week, um, I'm gonna take off Friday, my birthday, or Sunday, my birthday, and so, I'll probably be a couple of weekends to get, uh, so probably the week of the twenty-fifth, the week before, I'll be due that Sunday, or Monday. Review it on, uh, when is that, twenty-seventh?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Bring it to the council, depending on how, there you go, so whichever we have. The council, discuss, and then we'll finalize it.
Who said you'd have it to us, when the meeting?
Uh, maybe it's twenty-seventh, so I'll have to, you know, the twenty-fifth of March.
Okay.
So that's the charter update, by the way, I wanted to, uh, put some signs out here in front of the desk. Uh, you know, we're seeing different signs going up around the city, on different projects that we're doing, uh, I think Indian Field is over here, is, is one of our projects that we're gonna be doing, uh, I believe this one is.
Pioneer Plaza.
Pioneer Plaza, okay, we already had one there, but it was a little too small, so we needed to make it bigger, and that's gonna be the replacement for that. Uh, there's one at, at the mural at, at Passage, uh, uh, Business, uh, one at the Boy Scout Hut, one down at Carver Park, so you'll start seeing these signs start popping up as we start doing things. Well, we wanna let people know we'll be working on it, we haven't really given any dates, because they're kind of fluctuate, but, uh, let them know that something is coming, and, and what we're gonna be doing. So, and it also helps, because, like I say, we have partners in, in all of these ventures, and, uh, except Carver, so far, we don't have any guys to help us with that. But, uh, we want to let everybody know who's helping us, for instance, the Rover Club, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, uh, I think Indian Field is Rock Bottom Services, you know? They're coming forward, helping us, giving, you know, funds or, or materials, so we wanna express, you know, our, uh, our, our gratitude, you know, by letting everybody know they're helping us. And it may give somebody else, you know, uh, an idea that they could help us, and, you know, get a little exposure there, so. Uh, going back to my list here, uh, our HR policy, we're, we're going through it, uh, updating it, they, they have a complaint, my committee is complete here for the HR policy update. Uh, currently, uh, I'm reviewing it along with Bonita, and we're hoping, after we review it, that it'll be on the agenda for April the first.
We may have a revision in that.
Okay.
He's gonna be working on it on the drug.
Oh, okay.
Part of it, but it'd be a smaller revision with, uh, Pat's coming up with it.
Okay.
But basically, yes, you're right, it's complete.
Right, so I, I think we can move forward, April first, and then on what we come up with, sort of the drug policy on our HR. Our solid waste grant update, uh, as you know, we went out for solid waste grant with the COG, the Council of Governors, uh, went and came in, they came in today, signed the contract, uh. So, that money's been released to us, or the grant has, and, uh, so, we'll be going out this week and getting equipment that's covered under that grant. That way, we can go ahead and get our, you'll start seeing cardboard treaders showing up in different areas, like Alses, and I think Stripes, and other areas that we negotiated with the, with the store owners, that we can set up a cardboard tread, and they start filling it up. We bail it, say, like, seven, so, uh, we're moving forward with that.
My garage is getting full.
Yeah.
My statement since you said.
And really, if you want, you know, Carlos will come get it.
I'll bring it down one day, I remember.
Uh, our JAG grant, I'll put that in, I know Stan talked about it earlier, uh, it is, uh. We have applied for the grant, uh, the due date was the twenty-eighth of February, uh, it will be awarded late this summer, early fall, according to the, uh, grant administrator. It will be awarded late this summer, early fall, according to the grant administrator. And it won't start until oh-one October, so it'll be next system year when we get our money. So, but that's good, at least we have a date to go with it. Let's see, street grant update, deadline is the thirteenth of March. We're working with our grant admin to get all the information required. They need surveys of streets that we're doing, house, like house-by-house surveys to gauge the, what income bracket these people are in, the demographic, you know, that they're in. Because they want to do low-to-medium income type improvements. So for instance, they don't want to go to a very high-end neighborhood where the income bracket is higher and redo all their streets, you know. They want to go maybe to a lower-income area that hasn't paid a lot, you know, property tax that, you know, it offsets the, so. Anyway, and definitely the streets we're doing aren't very high-income areas, so we don't really have to worry about it. I think we're at ninety percent, so we're good there. Last week, they had a Reynolds County Junior Livestock Association meeting, and, you know, in the spirit of, you know, cooperation, you know, you know, we want inter, interagencies to cooperate well. They are working, they're actually the ones working on a lot of the improvements for the community center. Their goal is to get the community center up to a certain point where they can handle a lot of, a lot of livestock going through there. And they've got plans, they're just now finishing up phase one of the plans for this, this, this area. Their phase two and three will be adding a whole different barn right behind it, going like towards the tennis courts, and then an additional barn after that. And so you're looking at, I think, a forty by eighty and a fifty by hundred and twenty. So there's two large buildings that they plan on going up there. Asked them to keep me impressed, one of the, one of the agreements we had with them is that if they supply materials, we'll supply a lot of labor, which we, you know, depending on our schedule, we have no problem doing. We just need to give a little lead time. And all this was discussed the other night, so. But everything's going forward. I think they have all the areas on the actual community centers itself to add some bands, and then they start on phase two. So, and we've agreed to help them out with, with that as well. They had a, like an end date of two years before they could really get started working on it, but hopefully with our help, we can push that down to one year. So we'd like to, next year, have that, that other building up and, up and running for And then last but not least, we had our CPR first aid classes last week, and everybody went, it went really well. We had twenty people in the class, which is capacity, and everybody did really well.
Pretty fast.
Certified, yes. Yes, so, anyway, just an update. I know it's kind of long, but that was it for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot going on.
Thank you, sir.
All right, here are requests for future attendance, City Councils, anything that needs to go on future attendance, please.
Glad to have you both again. Still, we're still on the building ordinances.
Check on his own, and advance how people live in the business district.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
I think so.
That's cool.
Okay, I was just asking, I thought you said something. That yours?
Good.
All right. Thank you all, everyone, for coming in tonight. We're getting about to go into executive session.